I would like to call the special meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose home it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a reminder that this, we do have public comment on this, these items only. If anyone hasn't filled out a comment card and they would like to, please do so now. Patty, please call the roll again.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
As this is a special meeting and no actions can be taken outside the items on the agenda, there are no additions, deletions, or modifications. We have ordinances 28 and 32 are mutually exclusive. It is either one or the other, but neither. Comments from the public may be combined and are limited to three minutes. So if there, I have three comment cards. If anyone else wants to comment, please do so now. Otherwise forever hold your peace. No, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist. So, Patty, since we're going to be talking about these together, would you please be, please read both titles since they are mutually exclusive? Oh my heavens, there's so many words.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 28, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with section 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes. Calling for a referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electors of the city that the city charter be amended at section 4-1 to provide that any council member who has left office due to term limits may not be reelected for a period of three years, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Ordinance, ordinance 32, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with sections 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes. Calling for a recommend, referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at section 4-1 to provide that any council member who has left office due to term limits may not be reelected to City Council for the remainder of their natural life, providing that the remainder, remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Max, you did your presentation. I don't think you need to do another one, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I have three comment cards. Lois Kleinberg, Meg Shannon, and Jane Feinstein. Lois, would you come up? Please state your name and address for the record.
Lois H. Kleinberg, 13285 Redund Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm going to be very brief. I'm in favor of ordinance 28, where one may be reelected after a sit-out period of three years. I think that a lifetime ban as proposed in ordinance 32 is draconian. I think that you are, we will be losing a valuable resource in our community, people who have served. It will serve a purpose that a dynasty will not be created if they serve, if they have to sit out a term, but they may be able to provide a lot of help to the community. So I would go for ordinance 28. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Meg Shannon, I think I called you next. That's the next card I have. Jane, you'll be after Meg. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Meg Shannon, 1111 Orinoco Way. I also would favor ordinance 28 and disagree with ordinance 32. But I also want to just make the point, let the voters decide. Those who've been opposing the proposed charter changes apparently don't trust the voters to get it right by either adopting or rejecting the proposed changes. Why don't they want to allow the voters the opportunity to make the choice for themselves? Instead, they want to block voters from having the opportunity to decide. The opponents must be afraid that the version that they helped get adopted will be rejected if voters get a chance to look at alternatives. I don't think those who oppose the CRC proposals are necessarily representative of the entire city. I believe the community in general is much more open-minded and willing to consider options other than, other than the single approach to term limits offered to them in the past. The council is merely deciding to put those options on the ballot, allowing voters to decide. So I ask that you don't let a few vocal and loud opponents block the right of voters to make the decisions for themselves. Maybe those of us who support the proposal should wear stickers that say, "Don't block our right to vote." I oppose having a lifetime ban. I support the adoption of three three-year terms with a requirement to sit out for three years before being eligible to run again. As previously discussed, incumbents need to be responsive to the electorate during their first two terms, knowing they'd need community support in their election for a third term. If they're faced with a lifetime ban at the end of a third term, why would they need to be responsive to the electorate during that third term? Allowing them wait out one term before running again would ensure that council members would be responsive to the electorate during their third term as well as during their first two terms. That would mean a total of nine years during which they'd be concerned about being responsive to the electorate. Those opposed to the proposed changes seem to prefer having council members limited to two three-year terms with a lifetime ban against future terms. This would mean council members would only have an incentive to be responsive during the first, the first three-year term. Isn't it better to have an incentive to be responsible to the electorate for nine years rather than three? I think that is the case. At the last council meeting, a comment was made about proposed, the presentation I made to the NCNC, and I just wanted to dispel any misunderstandings. I don't think the CRC was rushed in its process. Most of the issues were non-controversial in nature, did not require significant time for discussion. The issues dealing with term limits, the ability to rerun in plurality versus majority were the primary substantive issues and were reviewed and discussed at length. And I don't think any member of the CRC felt they were rushed in decisions, and at no time was discussion cut off or limited. As members of council, you face difficult issues and are doing your best to make the right decisions for the good of the greater community, and I thank you for serving our community so responsibly.
Thank you, Meg.
Jane Feinstein, 3666 Toulouse Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. I would be, I'm totally in favor of ordinance 28, and I strongly oppose ordinance 32. I oppose a lifetime ban on council members serving. I don't believe that the council members who have termed out should be forever prevented from running again. After they sit out a term, if they want to get back in the game, then they need to be responsive to the voters. And the voters, if they merit reelection, the voters will reelect them, and if they, if they don't, then the voters will not reelect them. I think we should leave it up to the voters and let them have the final say. I think there's no reason to limit the voters' options by ordinance. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, it makes no sense for the city to lose the benefit of the skills and the knowledge and the experience of council members who choose, who decide that they would like to continue serving after, after a sit-out. There's no reason to lose our institutional memory. There's no reason to lose the stability in the, in the council. And I think our city would be best served by leaving the decision about who will serve us to the, to the voters and not enforcing a lifetime ban. Thank you all for your service. You do a great job.
Thank you. All right. I have no more comment cards, so I'm going to close the hearing at this time. And a second separately, Max, or in?
For 28.
Okay. So I got a motion and a second for ordinance, to adopt ordinance 28, because then you, you need the motion and the second to have the discussion.
Motion to adopt ordinance 28, 2017.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. So now I will bring it back for discussion, and now we will discuss. But before we do that, and I usually go last, I'm going first.
All right. This is the one you want to go with, ordinance 28?
This is 28, but I'm just going to, I, I have some comments. Okay. The city attorney is here. He gives us a legally sufficient ballot language that is limited to 75 words in the title and 15 words in the question. So going forward from that, we're doing our five-year review of the charter, which was a mainstay of the 2017 campaign trail. A voluntary charter review committee was convened with members of the community and recommendations were made. If we ignore those recommendations, how democratic are we being? And we are denying everyone the opportunity to decide. Voters can vote up or down on any or all of the issues, but it's our duty to give them the right to choose. In the end, it is not up to us to decide what happens. It is up to the voters, but we need to give them that choice. In the case of term limits, we are a $150 million service business with 500, 500 employees and a five-member board of directors. We are in the position to completely remove that board and replace it every six years. How can you ask businesses to invest in our community if the leadership of that community is in constant turnover? As business tax receipts and commercial property taxes are revenues that help keep our homeowner taxes as low as they are today, we should be proactive when it comes to keeping businesses in our city. We do this by maintaining a stable environment, as stable as possible. People voted for term limits. That is a fact. However, I have heard over and over again from members of our community, they were not given any choice as to what those terms should be. That is what we are doing, giving the voters the right to decide. If they don't want any changes, then it will be reflected at the ballot box. But what is at stake here is greater than just extending term limits. It's bringing a charter that is over 40 years old in line with current laws and economies. We are a big city with a small city charter, and we are defending that charter due to outdated wording, illegalities, and business practices that go against the state constitution. Doing what is right is more important than doing what is popular. While this is not the popular thing to do for some voters, it is the right and courageous thing for all. Members of the public will have more opportunity to vote us out if they are unhappy with the job we were elected to do. A natural staggering of terms will occur as people's lives constantly change. We are contractually limited by the supervisor of elections, and therefore this will be on the March 2018 ballot. We have asked to move the election, and the supervisor of elections has refused to allow us any alternatives. Our only other option would be to void the contract with her and hold our own elections. This would mean purchasing equipment, hiring people to run the elections, and spending money that would be better spent on our police, fire, recreation, and other things that make this community great. We have a 94 percent approval rating from our residents, and I would like to see that continue. We live here because of the services provided and the leadership that has come before us. Whether you like or dislike previous members of the council, that is not a reason to prevent these recommendations from being put to the voters. All we are doing is giving the voters their right to vote. Each of us sitting here is doing what we feel is best for the city and something we feel deep in our hearts. I have said my piece. So, who wants to go first?
On ordinance 28, being that it has been said by the attorney that crafted the lawsuit and by the person who fronted the whole shebang, it was never intended for there to be a lifetime ban on the term limits. And I think that ordinance 28 takes that into account. And a sit-out of three years, you really have to want it. The city is really going to have to want you back to put you back in with a sit-out of three years, and I think it's a good compromise whichever way 27 ends up going.
Thank you. Matthew.
I think I'm going to wait and listen a little bit and see what people say. I'll come back to it. I flip-flopped on this so much. I've been talking on, for months on this, and I'm going with Jane. It just, if we go a lifetime ban, then are we not stealing away the voter's right to vote? Just on that one little thing. I think I can do a better job if I'm elected in two, three terms. I don't know who would come back statistically speaking. I think when you're out three, it shows that you're pretty much out. But then again, nobody thought that I would be here either. So if I, I'm not ever, I'm going to go the way the constituents go. Mr. Dienerstein said it in open council meeting, that there was never the intent of a lifetime ban. Mr. Deloe said it in open court. Mr. Dienerstein was the chair of the Republican Party for 10 years, which is a two-year term, so he knows what it's like to run consecutive terms. And I think that if we, if we do vote the three-year sit-out in, it will ultimately forever give the voter the right to vote, not only a council member in three times or less if him or her is not doing a good job, but then if they want that previous council member back in, then they still have the right to vote for that person again or not. It just leaves everything in the will of the people, which is really, I think, what ultimately our job is to do. Thank you.
My, my opinion doesn't matter about what I think should happen. My vote is one, as is yours, and yours, and yours, and yours, and everyone else in the room. I have my opinions, and I have a strong opinion that I believe that three three-year terms is, is proper and that lifetime ban isn't necessary. However, I struggle because, first of all, ordinance 28, if the voters choose yes, it's a straightforward, there's a three-year sit-out. If the voters choose no, there's a one-year sit-out. That's not, is that true, Max? Am I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that tells.
Functionally, not, it, it doesn't, it doesn't mandate a one-year, but as a matter of.
No, but there is no, there is no limit to how long people can sit out. They can sit out one year, they can sit out two, three, five, it doesn't matter.
Correct, yes, sir.
And that's a decision, and that's a choice that I don't know if the voters really understand. When they see this question, and I'm sorry, I'm going to say things that maybe, whatever, but when they see this question, they're going to see three-year term, sit-out, and the first thing the voter's going to think is, well, yes, I agree with that, or no, I don't agree with that. And when they vote, no, I don't agree with that, my thought is that they would think that they're not allowed to come back. That's the thought of the voter. I could be wrong. When you look at 32, and I know we're not talking about 32, there's a distinct difference. Is there a lifetime ban or is there not? So my opinion, what I would think is best is that there shouldn't be a lifetime ban. But our job is to try to put a question on a ballot that people will truly understand, not giving them a choice of this, oh, and by the way, if you don't choose a three-year ban, well, now it's only a one-year ban. It's not, it's not a question that people are going to understand, in my opinion. I could be wrong. I'd like to hear what you say about that. But that's why I have a hard time with 28, because even though I think a three-year sit-out term is adequate and a good idea, it doesn't give the voter the option to choose three or, you know, they don't, they don't have another choice. I mean, it's either a three-year sit-out or a one. And is that really the question that we want to ask the voters to answer? Because they don't, they're not, they're not being told that, oh, by the way, if you vote no on this, it's going to be maybe a one-year ban. That's not what they're being told. That's not, that's not written there. So I think you would have the potential of creating language that people won't understand the alternative, and that's why I struggle with 28. 32 is straightforward. Is there a lifetime ban or is there not? Everyone's going to understand what that means. And that's why I, I want to keep this, again, my opinion is my opinion. My vote is going to be my vote. I just don't want anybody to come back to us and state that we presented a question that wasn't giving them two, two distinct choices. Because 28, the choice is three years or maybe one. And that's not a distinctive choice. And that's my, that's my problem with the way 28 leads me. And that's why I was asking, is there any way to put in there somewhere, yes, we're going to educate as best we can, but at the end of the day, how many voters are going to show up at the voting booth? And, and you know, in the ideal world, people would pay attention to elections, they would learn about the issues, and we'd get 90 percent turnout. And we know that in America, especially, maybe Palm Beach Gardens is different, I don't think it is, come March, I don't think we're going to have that type of interest. And that's why I'm a little bit nervous about putting a question there when people don't know what the no answer is going to give them, so.
Could he, could Max do what he did in 32 on 28 and put what the current is and what the default is if it doesn't pass?
I could, I'm just sitting here trying to craft something in the first sentence because I'm, I'm really, right now, as I just amended it, it's 75 words, so I'm trying, that's the tough part, is trying to make sure that the summary is sufficient but that I explain things.
And I just realized that tonight. I didn't, I wish I had thought about this yesterday, as I read it and read it and read it, and then suddenly tonight it just hit me.
It's a valid concern.
Well, it does say, "The current charter does not specify how long a term-limited council member must be out of office."
Correct. It doesn't specify.
It doesn't specify. And what we're doing is, we are making that specification in this question.
Yes. But if people are going to vote yes, so the people that are going to support that will vote yes on that. The people that are not going to support that, we don't know what their intention is. Is it to leave it as an unknown how long they're going to be out? Or are they voting that they don't want people to come back again? We don't have that, that isn't in there, and that's.
But it says it's unspecified.
It says it's unspecified. Right. But now you're not giving, you're not giving them a choice. You're giving them a choice of three years or an unspecified amount of time. That's not a distinctive choice.
But it, it is the circumstance that we're in.
Right.
It is accurate, and that, and I could change the wording so it says, it doesn't really give you a quantifiable number, but it says, "The current charter does not specify the minimum time that a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again." It's just a different way of saying the same thing.
That's better.
But it's, it might be a little more clear.
At least now the people will read that and say, oh, well, then if you don't know how long, but now for sure, at least now you're giving, they know. I don't.
Max, could you read that again?
That's why I tried to tweak, so the current charter, so for question three, it says, the summary would say, "The current charter does not specify the minimum time that a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again. Shall the Palm Beach, shall the Palm Beach Gardens charter be amended?" Blah, blah, and goes through 28.
That's clearer. That's much clearer.
Patty, can you print that?
Max, can you, can you?
It's all good.
Okay.
No, I mean, I, that, that clarifies that question.
Uh huh. Okay.
Whether that's still.
Well, I can, I, I can, and this.
It's not a print.
And this, again, and that is, and what I've got in the summary is 75 words. And so what it says now, I know what you have, right now is a little different, but it says, "The current charter does not specify the minimum time that a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again. Shall the Palm Beach Gardens charter be amended to establish that term-limited council members must be out of office for three years prior to being reelected, such that they may not run for city council again until the second regularly scheduled municipal election following that member leaving office?" And if I may, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, Mayor, the reason that I say the second, that they cannot run for office again or qualify until the second regularly scheduled city municipal election is because, as you all know, we have a bye year. We have an election, we have an, and then the next year we have an election, and then in the year three, we don't have an election. And it's important to understand that in our code and in our charter, newly-elected council people don't take office until the meeting immediately following the election. So if I said three, three elections, it would be four years, not three. So you're in office, at the end of your term, there's an election in March, your successor takes office in April. So that election wouldn't be counted as an election after you left office, because you don't leave office in our, the way our charter is written right now, in the language that's in 26 and currently in our charter, it's when your successor is elected and qualified. So when your successor is elected and qualified, and then they take office formally in the first meeting in April, that's when your term ends. And that's very common, it's very normal, even if your term is three years, if your successor is not elected, normally the way it works is a council member, a sitting council member, or a sitting elected official continues to serve until they have a successor. So you just don't have a vacancy in office. But that's why it's written that way, so that it says two, because I wanted to make sure that we didn't leave a hole in it. So it says the second election after having left office. That's when they would be eligible to run for election again, and it would end up being three years then before they took office.
Thank you, Max. Okay, the wording has changed a bit. Matthew, you're the last to speak, or we're going to go again because we have changed the wording. Go ahead, Matthew.
Are we going again?
You can go now.
I've spoken a lot about this last time, and I'm not going to take anybody's time. I'm not again, I'm not for this proposal, but it seems to me if you really wanted to clear it up, instead of saying, "The current charter does not specify how long a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again," you would actually use the language of the charter, and it fits in nicely because it's less words. And I would put in, "The current charter states that no individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full terms." That clearly says what the charter currently says, and then if you want to amend it, then it makes it clear what you're doing. Otherwise, I believe that there's a number of cases, a line of cases that say that it would be struck down. Second of all, I, I'm not sure that I agree, let me rephrase that. The way I read this language, and it's just English, it says, "No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full terms." I don't see how you could sit out and serve more than six years, sit out one term and serve again, but different minds can differ on different things. So in brief, I'm done.
Thank you. Rochelle, you look like you have a question.
No, I'm happy with the, the changes that Max made to it. I think that if we go along with something like that, it does clarify it in the statement. We can't put it in the question, but it clarifies it into the statement, and it becomes a question of lifetime ban or no lifetime ban. 32 is a lifetime ban, and I can't see me going there at this point.
So, Max, we are voting on 28, but before we vote on 28, what do we do with 32?
Well, I think if you, you take them in, in order, and if you, you vote on 28 and you approve 28, then as a matter of procedure, you'll have to vote on 32, but your vote is, is already decided for you because they're mutually exclusive. So you would have to have a motion and a vote to, to deny or reject ordinance 32. And I would, if, would ask the councilmember Woods and councilmember Marciano as, to amend their motion to approve ordinance 28 as amended, with this amended language. Is that acceptable to the motion maker in the second round?
Yes.
So that's the question before you, Madam Mayor, is whether or not, is to call the question on ordinance 28, and then we would actually have a motion and a vote. I would recommend a motion to deny ordinance 32 with a second, and then have a vote to consummate that decision.
Okay. So, any more discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of ordinance 28 as it has been restated?
Amended, yes, as amended.
Amended? Say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Motion, I'm sorry, Mark, was that a?
Nay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure.
Motion carries three to two. So as a matter of course, for ordinance 32, which has already been read, may I get a motion and a second? Max, please clarify. I'm getting a motion and a second.
I would recommend a motion and a second to deny ordinance 32.
Okay, may I get a motion and a second to deny ordinance 32?
Madam Mayor, motion to deny ordinance 32, 2017.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. So we have-
Four ayes, five ayes.
Okay. Motion carries. So that is the last item on the agenda. So at nine o'clock, we are adjourned.
No, no, we're not adjourned. I would like to make a statement.
Oh, okay. Rochelle, closing comments.
Closing comments. We have important work to do here for the city. It's a democratic system with procedures and rules of order, and the only time we just get, decide, we get to discuss the issues that are brought before us is up here on the dais with each other during a public session. To think that Councilmember Lane would come in here last meeting with his own agenda, his mind made up, an agreement already made with a select group of residents before any of us had the chance to offer our opinions or have any discussions on the issues before us, and then accuse us, accuse me of being self-serving and complicit in trying to deceive the people of this city is outrageous, and I couldn't let it go unanswered. This has been an open, transparent process from day one, a process that he has been a part of from day one. On June 1st, we directed the city attorney to form a resolution for a charter review committee. On July 13th, there was a 5-0 vote to create the charter review committee. On August 3rd, Mr. Lane made the motion that ended up being a 5-0 vote to appoint members to the charter review committee. On October 12th, we directed the city attorney to draft ballot language, revising and organizing the city charter to correct the inconsistencies. The vote was 5 to 0. We also directed the city attorney to draft ballot language to require a city council member to be out of office one full term prior to be eligible to that office again. The vote again was 5 to 0. There was another request to ask the city attorney to draft language to change the method of election from majority to plurality. The vote again was 5 to 0. The only vote that was 4 to 1 with Mr. Lane opposing was the term where we asked for three, three-year terms instead of the two, four-year terms that he requested. We were elected to serve the people of this city by acting in the best interests of all of the city, and we were elected to do this with integrity, trust, and respect for the system, the staff, and each other. And the total lack of respect Mr. Lane demonstrated last week for all three is unconscionable and inexcusable.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to that. My son came to me to look over some debate prep, and I looked at what he said, and I said to my son, Stephen, you know, you don't attack the person, you attack the idea. And I told him that when I was a law clerk deciding, deciding cases, and I'd read briefs, and I'd see the lawyers attacking each other, I'd think to myself, first of all, they're wasting my time because I'm trying to decide an issue, and they're not giving me information that I can use, and second of all, I thought less of that attorney. And I think that instead of five people sitting here having the opportunity to work together collegially and make something better, and have a free exchange of ideas, which is great, conflicting views are wonderful, you learn from it, we have an advantage, there's five of us here, and we bounce ideas off each other, and hopefully, together, we reach the best possible conclusion. But I think it's bad manners, and I think it's a lack of etiquette to attack someone personally in this, in this situation. And I am personally offended, and when attacked in the future, what I would say is something like this. If you came into this room after living in this city and working on this for eight months, and you didn't have certain views, and certainly have your minds made up, then maybe you haven't thought about it enough, and maybe you shouldn't be here. Second of all, to say that it was, to say that it's not self-serving to add an extra term of office to your, for yourself, that's not self-serving. That's the definition of self-serving. So what I did, when I made my argument, was I laid out my thoughts on the, on the topic. Didn't discuss anything about anyone, and, and, not for nothing, but when I talked about the charter review committee, I said that those people, that I had tremendous respect for them, that I considered most of them to be friends, if not all of them to be friends, and I just happened to disagree with them on that point. But I think that going forward, what we need to do is not be like Congress, and not be in a situation where we're attacking each other personally by name from the dais. We need to be discussing the issues. I think that's good manners, I think that's etiquette, I think that's appropriate, and I think that we need to maintain civility in this council and never mention each other by name. What I think we need to do is discuss the issues. One's an ad hominem attack, that means against the person, that's the Latin, against the person. And the second is that we need to discuss the issues in an open and frank manner, and hopefully learn from each other. So I resent that, and I think that you should think about it before you do it again.
Mark?
I have no comment on that. I just wanted to make sure people understood that I am 100% in support of putting this question to the voters, and I am 100% comfortable with ordinance 28. I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to look at what we were asking. I'm glad that we're gonna put that language in that Max suggested. I think that helps. I just wanted to, the reason I, I just wanted to let you all know, and those in the audience know, I thought ordinance 32 was a little bit of a more, more clear-cut division of, of what people were gonna vote for, and that's why I supported, well, I would have supported 32 over 28, but I'm still very comfortable with ordinance 28 being put on the ballot, because I think it's gonna give people a choice, but that's, that's the reason for my nay vote.
Thank you. Carl?
Oh, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
I'm comfortable with the discussions that we had. I think it was very helpful to have the city attorney down there to, to actually broaden our discussion and give us a direction on the verbiage, which led us to amending 28 based on Mark's insight through discussion. So even though I went back and forth, and, you know, I was really heading towards that lifetime ban thing, but, you know, it's just like Jane and other people have said, and Rochelle said, and, you know, I don't wanna take anything away from the voter, and if we do a lifetime ban, that's exactly what we're doing. We're, we're giving an absolute in a charter that's gonna stand for years. So I'm really comfortable with, with, and I'm pleased, as difficult as it was to get here, we're, we're here. So I appreciate you for your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Max, Ron, and Patty, quick question. We are going to have an awfully long agenda in January, if I am not mistaken, considering we have the second reading of several ordinances that occurred at our December meeting, and we will have all the second readings of these. Have we noticed the meeting already? Do we need to start earlier?
The state ads have gone out.
The advertisements have gone out for the second reading ordinances with the start time at 7:00 PM.
Okay. All right, so we'll-
We may not have as much discussion on the news.
True. So, and we do have a cutoff of 11:30, so I'm just, who's ever coming to the next meeting in January, bring, the coffee will be outside. No. Anyway, I believe we have all sucked the air out of the room at this point, so I am going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.